All right, it's seven o'clock, so I'm going to call this meeting to order for the City Council of October 5th, 2021. Can we have a roll call?
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Ms. Kurler?
Here.
Mr. Waters?
Here.
Mrs. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Quidnall?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, if everyone can please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item four on the agenda already. Corrections and approval of the regular City Council minutes of September 21st, 2021, and City Council Budget Work Session minutes of September 28th, 2021. Is there any comments or corrections? I guess I should move for approval, actually.
I'll make a motion to approve the City Council minutes of September 21st and the September 28th Budget Work Session.
I'll second. All right, motion by Ms. Kurler, second by Mr. Fields. Seeing no discussion, can we move to a roll call for the acceptance?
Ms. Kurler?
I.
Mr. Waters?
Hi.
Mrs. Bishop?
Hi.
Ms. Quidnall?
Hi.
Mr. Fields?
Hi.
Motion passed 5-0.
All right, moving forward to correspondence. Mr. Fields, any correspondences since our last meeting?
I did not.
Okay, Ms. Kurler?
Yes, I had two contacts. One was from a Lake Mills resident expressing support for parks in the city budget and asking about how parkland is dedicated for the Tyranina Point and Brookstone subdivisions. And then I received an inquiry from a town resident asking to meet with me regarding ATV use on city streets.
Okay. I actually had no correspondence. Mrs. Bishop?
I had the same correspondent as Ms. Kurler about the ATV routes in the city.
All right, Ms. Quidnall?
I had no correspondence.
All right. Let's move forward to questions and public comment. I don't think anyone registered. And there is no public hearing today, so we'll just get past that. And we're up to the City Manager Report.
I have provided nothing, unless you have any questions. I don't have anything to add.
Any questions or comment? All right. Move on to item eight. This is the Councilmember Board Report and Acceptance of Minutes from the Lake Mills Housing Authority, or also known as Rock Lake Manor, of May 25th, 2021 and June 22nd of 2021. Any, let's handle the Manor first. Any questions or comments there? Seeing none, I'll accept those into our agenda. Any other comments on Board Reports? All right, so now we enter council business. We're going to start with Resolution 21-62. You can have a motion for consideration of that resolution?
I move to adopt Resolution 21-62, but should we have Misty read it?
Yeah, we will, as soon as we get a second here.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Ms. Quidnall and Mrs. Bishop. Seconds. Misty, can you read Resolution 21-62, which is recognition of city service by Officer Troy A. Strike?
Resolution 21-62, in appreciation of public service in the city of Lake Mills, Troy A. Strike. Whereas Troy A. Strike has served as a police officer of the city of Lake Mills for 26-plus years and was recognized as Officer of the Year three times. And whereas Troy A. Strike worked as a community service officer for 15 years and excelled at building relationships with young people, school staff, and administration, thereby strengthening relationships between the police department and the community. And whereas Troy A. Strike has been a vicarious streetwise and archetypal police officer. And whereas Troy A. Strike has worked to influence and achieve goals that were important to the city of Lake Mills Police Department. And whereas Troy A. Strike has provided reliable and authentic service that has contributed to the betterment of Lake Mills. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the city of Lake Mills does hereby wish to express their appreciation and acknowledgement on behalf of the citizens of Lake Mills to commend Troy A. Strike for his devotion, passion, and public service given to the city of Lake Mills.
Awesome, thank you. That was a tough word, by the way. Can you say that word one more time?
Archetypal. Am I saying it right?
Steve gave you the thumbs up.
Okay.
All right. Is there a comment or discussion? Steve, did you want to comment?
Well, Troy's been here longer than I have. He's been in a lot more trouble, too. But he's been a great officer to work with and done a lot at the schools and been a friend to a lot of people in the area. And we appreciated his service. Kind of surprised to see that he was ready to leave already, but good luck to him, and I hope he has a good retirement. I hope to see him soon.
All right, any other comments or questions?
I'd like to say something, Troy. Thank you for your years of service. I know that my kids going through school would comment about your service at the schools. And I know that you had a huge impact on many of the children in our community and, of course, the citizens of our community. So thank you for your service.
Yeah, thank you. We can't give you as big a send-off as the schools, but we can say you're appreciated.
I just also wanted to say thank you. I know the time away from family and the things you have to do, it's not easy, so definitely much appreciated.
I'll follow up, knowing how important it is to have relationships, positive relationships, between students and our law enforcement and how much that can better a community. So I appreciate, not just for myself, but also for a lot of the children that you've touched in lives. Thank you for doing that.
Officer Troy, thank you for your many years of service. I just met you in the hallway tonight for the first time, so I'm glad I never encountered you in a law enforcement situation. But I'm grateful for all the care that you've given to this community and to my family during the years that we've been living here. And, Mr. President, I'd like to ask that we suspend the rules to allow Officer A. Strike to come up and speak with us if he would like to.
Second.
All right, motion by Ms. Kurler, second by Ms. Quidnall. Show of hands. It's 5-0. The floor is open. No. Now it's live.
All right, thank you. I'm all speech out after last week, but I really do appreciate all the kind words from you and everybody from the community. Steve, you've been great to work with over the years. The leadership in this community has really been solid for a very long time, and I think we're lucky to have the leaders that we have, including yourselves now. So just thank you for taking the time out of your meeting to have the resolution, and it means a lot to me to know that my work here was not for nothing. So this last week has been amazing. The community's treated me incredibly well, and I can't say thank you enough. So, thank you.
All right, Misty, can we make this official and do a vote?
Mr. Waters?
Hi.
Mrs. Bishop?
Hi.
Ms. Quidnall?
Hi.
Mr. Fields?
Hi.
Ms. Kurler?
Hi.
Motion passed 5-0.
Fantastic. All right. I'll just come out and shake your hand real quick, and we will get a resolution signed and get you official copy in the next week or so. So, thank you. All right, moving on. Discussion Decision on 2022-2024 Contract for Assessor Services, Grota Appraisals LLC. So can I have a motion on, or can I have a, yeah, motion for, Motion 21-10-1-1?
I move to approve Motion 21-10-1-1, authorizing the City Manager to execute an agreement between the city of Lake Mills and Grota Appraisals.
I'll second that.
All right, motion by Mrs. Bishop, second by Ms. Kurler. Is there any background on this from the city staff?
Grota's been here quite a while. We did go through a RFP about 10 years ago, but they selected them again. I believe that the one thing about this contract is that this year, we received over $1 million from the federal government. So we have to perform an extra special audit that'll add to the cost, and that was one of the items that you'll note in the budget. So that's part of this. Betsy, do you have anything you want to add?
No, nothing really. Like we've talked about before, the changeover in staff will influence some of the ways that the different processes we have to go through the years, such as, you know, open book and board of review. And having them as a constant with the changeover in staff would be very helpful in that new hire. Otherwise, I think Grota's been doing a great job for us, and I think that would be to our benefit to continue that.
All right, is there any questions or comment? All right, seeing none. Let's move forward with a roll call vote.
Okay, this is going to be a roll call vote for City Council Motion 21-10-1-1, authorizing the City Manager to execute an agreement between the city of Lake Mills and Grota Appraisals LLC. Mrs. Bishop?
Hi.
Ms. Quidnall?
Hi.
Mr. Fields?
Hi.
Ms. Kurler?
Hi.
Mr. Waters?
Hi.
Motion passed 5-0.
All right. Moving forward to Ordinance 1227, Amending the Ward Boundaries and Council Districts. This will be the first reading. Can I have a motion for considering this ordinance?
This one just is the reading?
So we don't need a motion for this?
Not at this point. It would just require the reading.
That speeds things up. All right, let's go right into the reading.
Okay, and I just want to confirm, based on the length of it and our code, that you're okay with me reading title only on this one?
That would be great, thank you.
Ordinance 122-
I know it's a three-page ordinance, right?
Yeah, it's-
So if anybody wants to read the ordinance, go online and you can read it there, but here's the title.
Ordinance 1227, Amending Ward Boundaries and Council Districts, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
All right. So that's the first reading. Any discussion or questions on this ordinance?
If I were you, I would recommend people look at the attachment, which is a map, much easier to read and determine what's being done. There are a couple small changes that Dwayne has recommended in making. He put this together pretty quickly last weekend, and over the weekend, he noticed a couple errors, so we'll make those corrections. They're just scrivners here, so we'll correct those. Other than that, no. Any questions for Mr. or Dan?
Yes.
Just a quick question. Can you remind us what the timeline is for-
I'm sorry.
Sorry. Steve, can you remind us what the timeline is for needing to complete this process in order to be prepared for elections next year?
The county needs to have it sometime around the third week in November, Misty, and because we have to do a notice, they have to do a notice, we have to have it done earlier. So we were hoping to have it done in the first meeting in November. We could run a little longer if we needed to, but-
No, Steve, the county's public hearing is November 3rd.
Okay, so we have to have it.
So that was part of the discussion, I think, that we had kind of talked about earlier, that ideally, if we could have the third, ideally, it would be that we'd wrap this up by the second meeting in October to give them time. So our third meeting would be November 2nd, the day before their public hearing.
Yeah, so she'll want to have a waving of the second reading and move to the third reading.
And my recommendation would be to, and my request would be, that we actually, if you guys would suspend the rules, allow me to do the second reading this evening and send it to third reading at the next meeting, that way it would be noticed on our agenda as being a third reading, opposed to being a second reading, and me making the request then to wave and go forward. If that makes sense.
I'll make a motion that we suspend the rules to proceed to the second reading this evening.
I'll second. All right, motion by Ms. Kurler and a second by Mr. Fields for suspending the rules and moving to the second. Let's just do a show of hands, if that's okay. That's a 5-0. So let's move to the second reading.
Okay, thank you. Ordinance 1227, Amending Ward Boundaries and Council Districts, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
Do you want to talk at all, Misty, about the districts?
Yeah, I can just kind of, if you looked at the map, this is the redistricting. It's based on the census. The county had put together their lines, and the first thing that I noticed is the county district supervisory districts we currently are in two. Under this new proposal, the city of Lake Mills would actually go to three county supervisory districts. It would be, Ward 1 would actually move into County Supervisory District Number 15. That would be one change. As far as the wards for the city, there are some changes. There's not a lot in the southern portion with 3, 6, and 7. In fact, I think those are pretty close. There's a little bit towards the north side. One obviously being moving to a different county supervisory district. I did take a look also at the current council members, and everybody, the way the lines were drawn, everybody's in their current districts. Ms. Kurler would be the only one that would move wards, but it doesn't change district lines. That was just looked at recently. Jen, I just wanted to assure everybody that there wasn't anything with that. The county assisted us with this. Even though it'd be nice to stay with two county supervisory districts, for my purposes, for elections especially, I didn't see anything that they could have done differently. And I think they did a really nice job with the city of Lake Mills, and we are not the only municipality with the growth that required changing the county supervisory districts.
All right, any other discussion or questions? All right, so we'll move forward to Item D on the agenda, which is Ordinance 1228, which is the 2002 general funding budget. This is the first reading for that as well. So, Misty, the floor is open.
Thank you. One moment. Ordinance 1228, 2022 General Government Budget and Tax Levy Ordinance. An ordinance appropriating the necessary funds for operations of the general government and debt service funds of the city of Lake Mills, Wisconsin for the year 2022. The City Council of the city of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, does ordinate as follows. Section 1, there is hereby appropriated out of the receipts of the city of Lake Mills for the year 2022, including monies received from the general property tax levy to the various purposes specified in the budget presented herewith for the purposes therein stated, the following amounts. The summary of adopted general government budget for 2022. Total revenues, 2021 budget, $5,492,700. 2021 estimate, $5,492,700. 2022 proposed, $5,676,400. Percent change, 3.3%. Total expenditures, 2021 budget, $5,492,700. 2021 estimate, $5,492,700. 2022 proposed, $5,674,200. Percent change, 3.3%. For the 2022 debt service, total expenses, 2021 budget, $2,028,500. 2021 estimate, $2,028,500. 2022 proposed, $2,028,500. Percent change is 0%. Total revenues, 2021 budget, $2,028,500. 2021 estimate, $2,028,500. 2022 proposed, $2,107,100 for a 3.87% change. The grand total amount required for the 2021 budget, $4,536,100. 2021 estimate, $4,536,100. 2022 proposed, $4,775,600 for a 5.28% change. Section 2, there is hereby levied a tax of $2,773,500 for all purposes, and 2,000, I'm sorry, $2,2,100 for debt services and all taxable property within the city of Lake Mills is returned by the assessor in the year 2021 for the uses and purposes set forth in said budget. Section 3, the city treasurer is hereby authorized and directed to spread this tax in the current tax role of the city of Lake Mills. Section 4, this ordinance shall take effect and be in force from and after its passage and publication.
All right, fantastic job. Thank you. All right. Any comment? Anything from the city staff first?
Do we need a motion?
No.
No.
Well, it's the preliminary run at the budget. It's our first reading. We'll still have at least one more study session and another look at it. But it gives us a basic idea of what we're going to be looking at for the budget in November. So you have anything to add, Betsy?
No, not right now.
All right, questions or comment? All right, so that's the first reading. And to go back, one, that ordinance on the City Council wards, we'll have that third reading on October 19th, as will be the second reading on this, the budget ordinance that we just had reading on. So moving to Item E, Ordinance 1229, which is the 2022 capital budget. This will be the first reading on that. Go ahead, Misty.
Ordinance 1229, 2022 capital budget. An ordinance appropriating the necessary funds for the operation of the capital budget of the city of Lake Mills, Wisconsin for the year 2022. The City Council of the city of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, does ordinate as follows. Section 1, there is hereby appropriated out of the receipts of the city of Lake Mills for the year 2022, including monies received from the general property tax levy to the various purposes specified in the capital budget presented herewith for the purposes therein stated, the following amounts. 2022 capital budget, total revenues for the 2021 budget and 2021 estimate, $2,315,700. 2022 proposed, $2,382,700. Total expenditures for the 2021 budget and 2021 estimate, $2,315,700. 2020 proposed total expenditures, $2,382,700. Section 2, there is hereby levied a tax of $46,900 for capital purposes and all taxable property within the city of Lake Mills as returned by the assessor in the year 2021 for the uses and purposes set forth in said budget. Section 3, the city treasurer is hereby authorized and directed to spread this tax in the current tax role of the city of Lake Mills. Section 4, this ordinance shall take effect and be in full force from and after its passage and publication.
All right, thank you, Misty. Sir, any comment from city staff?
Budget is consistent with the capital improvement plan that was passed in August and September. And so it follows right down the line with what that was in line with, so you get a good idea of how it spreads out over the tax levy.
All right, any questions or comment? All right, seeing none. We'll have a second reading on that ordinance as well on October 19th. Moving forward with the agenda, comments or future agenda? Any items for the future to discuss at this point? Seeing none, this is the, oh, there's one coming from city staff. Go ahead, Steve.
I know that there'll be the union contract for the police department. What else is there, Misty? There's-
What about the wastewater treatment plant facilities report?
Well, that might, we were talking about having a joint meeting with the City Council on the Public Works Board next week. So that everybody could be up to speed on the wastewater treatment plant facilities report, which is a pretty intense and expensive discussion. Otherwise, that would be on the agenda for the 19th. There was one other item, one there, Misty?
Wait one moment, I'm just opening my file.
You talked about it this morning, and I can't remember.
I wasn't there this morning. Hang on.
So she's looking that up on that wastewater. Are you suggesting that the City Council would attend the Public Works next Tuesday?
Yes. In fact, we were talking about a joint meeting, so the council and the Public Works Board would both be up here. You would open the council meeting, they would open the Public Works Board meeting, and then you would have a joint meeting. But if you can't, if we can't do that, then just whoever can attend will announce it as a potential council meeting, and everybody can be here to at least hear what's going to be discussed.
That's an earlier meeting, too. That's a five- That's a 5:00 p.m. meeting?
Yes.
Mr. Waters, I'm unavailable to attend next week.
Okay.
I'll be out of town.
So we'll have it on the 19th?
You would have the public work? Oh, you're saying?
They were, we had them scheduled to be on the meeting on the 19th anyways. They just were hoping to combine them together so that they could, it would be a more coherent presentation for everybody involved rather than splitting them up into two different meetings. But if that's what we have to do, that's what we have to do.
Go ahead.
Would it be beneficial for city council members to attend the meeting on next week, Tuesday, so that perhaps we can get an idea of what is going to be discussed before seeing it on the agenda on the 19th?
Yes. That's why I mentioned that we would probably post it as a potential council quorum. That way, if you wanted to attend, you could just attend. There won't be a joint meeting, but it'll be a, you can attend and get the information.
All right. So let's do it on the 19th, but have the quorum notice given for the meeting next week then.
And then that would be available on 8 by 8, so I could watch it later.
Great.
Okay.
Okay. All right, Misty. Did you come up with the other item possibly?
The other item would be accepting, it'd be a discussion decision on accepting Jen's disposal proposal. I'm assuming that's what you were referring to, Steve.
Yep. That was it.
All right. Anything else? Any other comments, questions for the good of the order?
I believe we have a closed session next meeting as well.
I apologize. I missed that. Yes, there, I also have my notes, a closed session.
Seeing nothing else, I'm going to move to adjourn this meeting at 7:32. Thank you.